We are a little delayed in getting started. We held an executive session to discuss legal matters prior to the start of this meeting. So if you could bear with me for a few minutes, we are going to review our meeting agenda as a part of our Legislative Caucus and then we will call our meeting to order immediately following. I will call the meeting to order. Mr. Truesdale will lead our roll call. The invocation this evening will be led by Councilwoman Rodriguez, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilwoman Rawls. For communications this evening, we have a presentation of the Rapid Transit Headquarters project that will be delivered by Tamara Dan. We will then open the floor for courtesy of the floor, followed by the approval of minutes for the legislative session that occurred on February 11th, 2025. We have three committee reports. I will deliver the first report on behalf of the Administration Committee on the work session that occurred on February 18th, 2025. Next, our Public Safety Committee Chair, Councilwoman Jones, will deliver a report on the work session of February 18th, 2025. on the work session of February 18th, 2025. And the final committee report will be delivered by our Public Works Committee Chair, Councilwoman Rodriguez, on the work session of February 18th, 2025. We have three ordinances for first reading. Bill One of 2025, which will move to the Administration Committee. Bill Two of 2025, which will move to the Budget and Finance Committee. And Bill Three of 2025, which will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. We do not have any ordinances for amendment, nor ordinances for final passage. We will then move to resolutions. Resolution Six of 2025, we will vote upon. Resolution Seven of 2025, we will vote upon. Resolution Eight of 2025, we will vote upon. And Resolution Nine of 2025, we will vote upon. Resolution Ten of 2025, we will vote upon. Resolution Eleven of 2025 will move to the Budget and Finance Committee. Resolution Twelve of 2025 will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution Thirteen of 2025 will also move to the Administration Committee. And Resolution Fourteen of 2025 will move to the Administration Committee. Is there any old business for discussion, council members? Any new business? Okay, and then we will adjourn. So the time is 6:20 PM. I'd like to officially call our legislative session to order. Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the roll?
Ms. Daniels? Ms. Davis?
Present.
Ms. Green?
Present.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Rawls?
Present.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Bowers?
Present. As we heard, Vice President Green and Councilwoman Daniels are participating via Zoom this evening, and we are delayed in getting started because we hosted an executive session to discuss legal matters prior to the start of the legislative session. The invocation this evening will be led by Councilwoman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Madam President. As the weather changes and we head towards the spring and our Easter holiday, I'd like to remember those struggling from drug abuse, our unhoused community, anyone struggling from mishaps or hardships. And I'd like to really give a shout out of love to the Hughes family, the Byers family, and anyone that's drawn victim from gun violence or any mishaps throughout our city. This body is with you in our prayers, or with you and through your heart and household. If we all could have a moment of silence for those less fortunate and those going through hard times. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Rodriguez. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Councilwoman Rawls.
Everybody rise, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rawls. For communications this evening, we have a presentation of the Rapid Transit Headquarters Project.
Good evening. Thank you for having us. We're excited to be here to talk about our new Headquarters Project on Cameron Street. We have a team here. Tamara Dan and Ken Anderson are the consultants that are helping us lead that. I would also like to just take a moment, recognize a couple other people in the room. We have Meredith Bajica, who is the Deputy Secretary of the Multimodal, and as well as John Lovinsky from Pendott, and Eric Bugel, who is our Board Chairman. So they've joined us along with other consultants. We can hit the next slide, please. Whoops. And, well, really hit it, I guess. We'll get very excited. So, one more, please. So, it's all right, Ken, we're good. I'll pack it up at the end. All right, so this is the current site, as you're probably aware. It's on Cameron Street. We have Goodwill Drive and Forrester, as well as Hur Street. And so as we work through this evening, we'll talk about all those different components and how they all line up, but that gives you an idea of where we're talking about. And so I just want to spend a couple minutes talking about how did we get here or why did we get here, because I think that's really important. Our 121-year-old facility is, well, it's dated. And we have a maintenance department that's out of date and lacking space. Often repairs have to be made outside. Forty-seven percent of all of our workers' comp claims comes from the maintenance department, mostly due to the inadequate space and the challenges that they're facing in there. There's insufficient lighting, cramped spaces, inadequate infrastructure. Safety and securities are concerned. We're unable to maintain security during operating hours. Folks just are able to walk through the property the way it's set up. It's not gated well. There's no manned access, like automated gates and that kind of stuff. And so we've found ourselves with people inside the building who don't belong there, and that's not really good for a transportation system. We need to be working on that. Twenty-five percent, or twenty-six percent of all of our vehicle accidents occur on-site. The turns are so tight, the bus barns are so tight, we have collisions on the site all the, it's just not designed for today's transit system. So every system, every system in the facility needs to be replaced. Boilers, HVAC.
Excuse me, can you move the microphone closer to you?
Closer, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep. So every system in the facility needs to be replaced. Boilers, HVAC, roof, floors, electric panel, security systems. We've experienced gas leaks, plumbing backups. There's no fall protection for rooftop repairs on the bus. The last update to the paint booth was in 1979. There's one system that doesn't need to be replaced. It's the sprinkler system. We don't have one. So it doesn't need to be replaced, but we need one. And what's scary about that is there's multiple barns, and if you remember from that picture that holds buses, each one of those barns holds $12 million worth of rolling stock with no fire protection. Probably not good. At our current hub at Market Square, it's really far from a real transfer center. It really isn't adequate to facilitate transfers. It lacks the space for allowing for time point transfers. ADA service is a challenge. Customer information really is absent. And so are employee restrooms, which is a real challenge if you're a bus driver. Trying to find a place to use a restroom along the way is not, is really not fair for them. I did put at your location a handout that talks about no-time transfers, and I won't go through that, but if you get a moment to read it, that really is the challenge that our riders and customers are facing every day for the lack of not having a good transit system in that area. So, you want to hit the next slide? Okay. So, one more. There we go. So, you know, looking at the facility, the bottom one is a York facility. It's maybe not quite 10 years old. The, I did the analysis. Our utility costs are about $1.15 per square foot. When the Harrisburg facility, it's $2.92, almost three times the cost. So now only will our, the facility be green, right? It's stewardship of energy because we want to move to compressed natural gas, which will help the environment. It will be green because we'll spend less on utilities. And compressed natural gas is about $1.60 less per equivalent gallon to diesel right now. So that would be a significant budget saving for us. So it's, you know, a good deal for the people who live and ride here in Harrisburg. All right, so I talked a little bit about the transfer center, really looking at improving the reliability and ADA components, so pretty important stuff. And the next slide. And so that's the handout I was talking to you about already. So one of the challenges that we see in a transit system, you should be able to freely move from one bus to the other when you're in the transfer center. If you're the first bus out on Market Street and you're on the last bus coming in, you will not meet that bus. It will have to leave for that bus to come in. So then you're forced to wait another half hour to 40 minutes for the next bus, when your bus is there, but you couldn't get to it. That's not how a transfer center should work. And so it's really important that we continue to try to advance this project, just to really provide better service. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Ken.
Thanks, Rich. Is this okay? Good. Good evening, everybody. Ken Anderson with StanTech, we're the lead architects and designers on the facility. So Rich did a great job of outlining the challenges. We've got a couple slides here that will outline our solutions to solve all of those. So first, the project's scope. It's a new facility, it's a new campus of facilities. So there's a lot that goes into a transit facility administration. So there's an administration building that includes training and dispatch. Dispatch is vitally important for the operation, where they can see the buses, they can see the drivers, they can put them together in a safe way. There's operations, which really addresses the operators or the drivers. There's storage. It says storage building, that means vehicle storage. So the vehicles will be stored inside, creating longevity for the vehicles. A maintenance building with things like a body shop, which they really don't have any of those things adequately at the moment. Fueling and wash bays on-site. It says they're future-proof for fleet transition.
Excuse me, can you move the microphone maybe up closer to you or take it off? Okay.
Sure. Here, I'll just take it. How's that?
That's better. Thank you.
So, future-proofing for fleet transition. So this building is designed to last 50, 60, 70 years, fleets transition over time as technology does. And then the transfer center, as Rich talked about, and safety. There's one other component we didn't put on there, which is a new parks facility as well, relocated on-site. Next. So here's the layout, or the site plan. If you remember the aerial from earlier, it's completely changed. The brown building on the right is, includes all of those things I just mentioned. It's one large building with three or four or five different components of the operation. You can see parking in the gray in the center, and a transfer center on the bottom of the page, adjacent to Cameron Street. And then over on the left, I'll talk about that in just a second, that's the new parks maintenance facility, which was relocated on-site. It currently sits in the north, near the cemetery. The, that's fine, you can leave it there, yep. Nope, go to the next one, that's fine. So there's a rendering of the building. The buses come in to the right at the current stoplight, which is now servicing Goodwill. So having buses come in and out at a stoplight location improves safety greatly. They currently don't do that. And they then circulate on-site completely behind a secure environment. They go around the building, they circulate inside the building, and then Rich's staff will take it from there to service them. You can see the transit center in the front. You can't quite see it from this, but all of that is secure. It's behind a secure fence so that Rabbit has the ability to open it up or close it down for safety in the evenings. There's a little building in the front there poking out on this end of the transit, or transfer center, which has restrooms for the operators, which Rich mentioned earlier, so they can easily get to those when they transfer from one bus to the other, or riders do, which they can't do now. And then you can see on the second floor there, in this corner that's closest to us, that's a training facility that can be used for, Rich's staff will use it quite often, but it can also be used for other city functions. It's got, it's going to have an excellent view of the dome, by the way. And then parking for employees on the left. The last thing I'd mention is you can, this is maybe just important to me, but there's a, you can see the design of the building sort of references a little bit of the existing facility in the place. So right now, there are three separate buildings that Rich has, and this new facility references place and location and the history of the place by mimicking that a little bit, and we think that's important for the, for the community. So improves transit benefits, I talked about a couple of them, but it's a modern structure, modern materials, far more fire resistant. Also, it's materials that last, so again, 50, 60, 70 years of materials that can be. Driving buses around and maintaining buses, things get dinged, you know? They happen quite often through no fault of anybody, but that's just as part of the operation. So the materials we've selected will last and allow for that. Rich mentioned the vehicles, that 25% of the accidents happen on-site, so all of the circulation is wide enough now where safe turning can happen. Left-hand clockwise turning, which is far more safe than turning a bus to the right. All of those things are included in here. Again, I mentioned coming in and out of the facility at a stoplight, but also the quality of the facility itself for the employees that work there, that's really, really important. So natural light, space that's large enough for them to operate and do the things they need to do in a safe manner. We know from history that that reduces workmen's comp claims, and it also allows Rabbit to really attract the best and the brightest workforce. And the transfer center, I think we've, there's finally, that's fine, you can go to that one. The transfer center being right there allows for great observation by Rabbit's staff, both during the day and in the evening.
So this is a very large public investment in transit, which is pivotal to the city. However, there's also a lot of community benefits that come from this, which should be the case because transit is a big part of community. And one thing that we are doing is making sure that this site is all built to code above the floodplain, 1.5 feet above what the real floodplain is, so no more flooding of the facilities. So that'll be all taken care of. Another thing that's a nice benefit to the community is your Cameron Street corridor view shed. That whole block from State Street to Hur is going to have a whole new view. So people that are coming into town on Cameron Street are going to have a beautiful view on that side of the street, as opposed to how it is now. You're also going to have a much better transfer center that's closer to where folks live. This is near the residential areas, and the transfer center is going to be much safer and much easier for folks to use. They can buy their tickets there, there's a window, a kiosk. We're also going to do all the environmental cleanup, so the entire campus, from DGS parcels to the Hur parcels on the corner, that we're relocating Parks and Rec, your Parks and Rec Operations Facility, that's all going to be cleaned up. Old underground tanks removed, clean closure reports. All pathways to hazardous waste will be all removed. So everything's going to be clean and safe. We also are getting new flood mapping for the project. It helps us, but it's also helping the Paxton Creek Watershed Group. They have a lot of greening they want to do to the Paxton Creek, and this FEMA study will help them get moving on those greening projects. So we're really happy about that. We're also doing a lot of local flood control. Of course, it's going to be all new storm water analysis, all new pipes, and we're separating the sanitary sewage and the storm water sewage on-site. We didn't legally have to, but we know it's the right thing to do. Yes. And another thing that's a benefit that I think is very important, because I've had kids, I've had kids, is the Sunshine Park will have visual surveillance now. The kids playing at the park will have, be right next door, not only to the transit facility, but right next door to your Parks and Rec Operation and Maintenance, where Todd works and where eyes will be, you know, during the daytime, they'll have eyes on kids playing in the park and make sure things are good over there. Some of the key partnerships we've had besides the city, I've worked extensively with Dave and Sasha on designing the new Parks and Rec Facility, which has been wonderful. We've also had meetings with all the departments going through this. But some of the other key partnerships that we've worked with in the last two years on this, of course Pendott, with the funding agency, the Paxton Creek Watershed Association, Capital Region Water has been extremely helpful with us. Department of General Services is legislatively giving us land, and the Army Corps of Engineers Department of General Services is legislatively giving us land, and the Army Corps of Engineers also had a huge role in that FEMA study that I spoke of for Paxton Creek. So it's been a lot of partnerships. So schedule, I know that's what everybody wants to know, when's this going to happen? It's going to happen in three packages, three construction bid packages, because this is a huge project. So this is what we thought made the most sense. First package is just the demolition of the corner of Hur, you know, the DF Hur parcels that were on the corner of Hur and Cameron, so that, the demo of those buildings and the demo of Goodwill. That's out to bid now, and those bids will be opened next week. So we're going to have stuff happening in the next month here on the corner there and on Goodwill, which is going to help Rich a lot because trying to maintain abandoned buildings and keep them safe and secure is difficult. The next package is going to be building the parks, your new Parks and Rec Facility, and that will go out to bid this coming fall. So that will be to build the new, because we can't demolish your existing Parks and Rec Facility until we build you a new one. So we'll build that at the corner of Cameron and Hur in the next construction package. And then the huge transit facility package, that will be the biggest money contract, of course, that will go out to bid in 2026. And that construction will last, you know, it's going to be a lot of jobs locally, and that construction will last two to three years at least. So in totality, we're talking about, you know, five years, five years of construction, three contracts. Each of these contracts, you have a general contractor, mechanical, electrical plumbing. So in totality, you have the opportunity for many, many construction contracts to be had. And I'm going to give it back to Rich.
So Tamara kind of talked a little bit about the first one, the bid package. I mean, as a job creation, there's going to be hopefully a lot of jobs created from this project based on the size of it. We are going to have a really concerted effort on outreach for DBE, veteran-owned and small business. You know, the prime contractors will obviously, right, but we really want to make sure that those smaller businesses have the opportunity to participate in this. So we're going to host a session, we think it's going to be in June, almost kind of like a mixer a little bit with some of the large primes in the area, and bring those businesses together so they can meet each other. Bidding on government contracts is not easy. We have a lot of requirements that we have to put in all of our procurements, and sometimes I think that puts small businesses at a disadvantage because they just don't understand what that is. So we want to have a time to share with them and give them resources to be able to adequately participate in the process. So we're pretty excited about that. Yep. We're going to do it, we're going to do it right. Right, we're going to try really hard. So we're, yeah, absolutely. So the funding plan, right, again, it's a big ticket. I actually provided the ideal plan, a prayer plan, and the current. Our goal is to continue to work over to the ideal plan. A lot of it has to do with federal funds, right? So we're going after federal funds. We prepared a grant application for the Protect grant that was due, I think, last week, and it was removed off grants.gov, and it's coming back in the spring. And so we'll have to see what that says, and we're going to go after those funds because we'll continue to go after them. And there's another federal grant that we can go after that. So our goal is really to move to that. Why is that important? The local match that's required by our local partners is based on how much state funds we put in. The more federal funds, the less state, the less we need to get from the locals. So we're working really hard to make sure that ideal plan is the plan. So that's our goal. So I don't know if there's any questions, I don't know if that's something we can do, but I do have a couple of other slides because I want to share other ideas that's going on, but I think we could pause for a second if we want to talk about the facility because that's really the meat and potatoes here today.
Council members, are there any questions?
I'll just make a comment for the record. Pretty, so far, this is a pretty good project, and I like the fact that you guys, we didn't have to ask you about jobs and, you know, those are some of the biggest things that, you know, this body wants to make sure that some of our Harrisburg-based businesses are included in the economics of our city. So I think this is, it looks good, getting us out of the eighties, and, you know, I think this is a pretty good project. So I just want to say thank you, guys, and thank you for presenting.
Any other questions or comments?
My questions were geared towards timeline, and you guys nailed that as well, and echoing Councilman Jones sentiments, the DBE inclusion, and just considering everything, I think was very thoughtful and I appreciate it for that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ross?
Thank you. Well, good evening again. I just have a quick comment and then question. I also agree, I think I would, all my questions were just about answered. I just loved how you're involving the community, you have a vision, you have a plan. It really moves Harrisburg forward in the direction that we want to go into, and especially, I know our residents want to go into. Yeah, thank you for getting us out of the eighties. My aunt was one of the first African-American women drivers for the cat buses, and they still look like they did when, and she's retired. But, no, but thank you. This is wonderful, I can't wait to tell her about it. But I just have one small question. So the buses are going to look different, right? They're not going to be blue anymore, they're going to be red, they're going to say Rabbit. Like, how is that branding going to look now that you're taking over?
Can I answer that? Maybe my next.
Oh, go ahead. Yes, yes, yes. I wanted to know what bus I need to look for, you know? Okay, thank you.
President Bowers, I do have a quick question. I heard you speaking about, you know, protecting the environment, which is also a good thing, and I've seen some plans for wastewater and waste management. But pertaining to the buses, are we looking electric? Are we going, are we going there?
So right now, we're working with PennDOT on a 3P with compressed natural gas. So we'll move away from diesel to compressed natural gas. The facility is going to be set up that it will be in a position to use the next generation, whatever that may be. It could be hydrogen, because we're already using compressed natural gas, which is a gas, like hydrogen, so that could be an easy conversion to. It's also going to have the infrastructure for electric if we end up going that direction. But we have about another 15 years on the 3P with PennDOT and CNG before we begin thinking about what's next after that. So about eight to 10 years, we're going to have to start planning what's next.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments?
President Bowers, thank you for this new addition to the city. I'm excited as well. My first question is about the, and you might want to answer this in your next presentation, about the time transfers. How will they work?
I will address that.
Okay.
Because that's exactly right.
Okay, great. And then the bids, will they be on Penn bid? Is that where they're going to be?
I think that's what we've been using, right?
Penn bid?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay, great. So I'm excited as well.
Okay.
Are there any thoughts of expanding the bus service throughout the city?
And I'm going to talk about that next, too. I love where you're all going with your question. This is perfect. Thank you for setting me up.
Awesome, because I remember that when there was a time when this buses were, they were all over the city. Okay, I'm looking forward to that. So so far, that's it for now.
Are there any other questions? Okay, seeing and hearing them, please proceed.
Okay. So the facility is great, right? But the facility isn't transit. It's how we do transit, right? So we just finished our first phase of what we're calling high-intensity mobility corridors. And so that's really how we're going to modernize what we're doing. So we're getting ready to launch, I think we have the kickoff meeting tomorrow for Phase Two. And so Phase One identified on this map, the corridors that we believe have the greatest potential. And so in transit forever, we provided, we sort of prioritized coverage over frequency. And if you need to use transit and the bus comes once an hour, do you really have transit? Probably not. So we're going to try to figure out what is that right mix moving forward to make sure that those high-intensity, we still have buses everywhere, but which are the corridors that people are really moving heavy on, and how can we give it more frequency to get them to and from work, whatever their needs are? And so that's why the transfer center is important. So when the routes come together, they can, actually, I think the next slide, maybe. Let's look at the next slide, see if that's it. Yeah, here's a perfect example, right? So this goes from the Lemoine Transfer Center to our new, hopefully soon, Transfer Center. We cross the bridge 165 times a day. That is wasteful. All of those routes are coming to and from. We should, on the west shore, those buses should come to the transfer center, and then one bus every 15 minutes comes downtown Harrisburg and goes back and forth. And the rest of the buses can be where they need to be. We really want to redesign the service, but it's really contingent upon this new project because we don't have the ability to do those transfers where we're at. It just doesn't work. And so that's kind of how those time-point transfers are going to work, so you can go from one stop to the next without having to wait 45 minutes. And they're all on schedules with technology, all that good stuff. So that's going to be really our focus for the next five years in service development, preparing to move in that direction. Sorry, go ahead. Just little highlights, less important probably to you, but it's part of our network, and that is the Lemoine Transfer Center, having that connectivity for people. A lot of individuals who live in Harrisburg work in all of those manufacturing and warehouse jobs along 81 and in Cumberland County. Having those good connections are going to be really important. So we want to make sure that that happens. And let's, again, a visual, much smaller of a transfer center, but the same kind of concept where buses come in, there's bays that they park in, and folks can transfer back and forth, and we'll have restrooms there for the drivers as well, a big deal for if you're an operator. Go ahead, next slide. Might be, we're getting close to the end, that's it? Okay. So I just, I know we're here for the facility, but I wanted to paint a little bit of vision. The buses will probably look like the one, go back one slide. That one, so you can kind of see it in there. And that is a compressed natural gas bus. And what's great about them is they do look more stylish, right? There's a little shape to them, there's some design to it, and so we're, they're quieter. So, but I just wanted to share just a little bit of our future, what we're trying to do in service, because the building's great, but it really is about the people we serve. They don't care how nice our building is. They want the bus to show up on time, and they need to get to work, right? That's the most important thing. So thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I would like to note, for residents and members of the public who are viewing this evening, the PowerPoint presentation that was shared will be available tomorrow on the city's website under eCode, so it will be available for a public review.
And if I may, on rabbittransit.org, there is a page that we plan on keeping updated through the whole project every time we meet up timeline or a new, so people, community can follow along the entire way through the process with us with photos, and really want to make sure that the community is engaged in the process so they know what's going on.
Oh, great, thank you. Councilwoman Ross?
Yes, I had one quick comment. I know currently Harrisburg School District does work with CAT in providing students with rides on the bus to get to and from school, and I hope that line of communication stays open, so the students are still able to get to school, and I hope you can spread out into other counties and do the same. So I just ask of that. Everything else was great.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. We will now open the floor to courtesy of the floor, just a few housekeeping notes before we begin. If you could please state your name and your address for the meeting record. If you don't feel comfortable sharing your address, please share the vicinity in which you live within the city. You will have four minutes to share your comments. Mr. Truesdale will serve as our timekeeper, and I will begin to my right. Is there anyone that would like to offer a public comment?
Thank you for inviting me back, I appreciate that. Deb Wire from Harmony Towers.
If you wouldn't mind stating your name into the microphone, please? Hold on, I'm not sure if it's on, it's turned off.
Testing, yep.
Okay, there we go. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. Deb Wire from Harmony Towers, 322 North Second Street in Harrisburg. And I was invited back again by Councilwoman Davis to report a little bit about what's been happening at Harmony Towers. And I can't even tell you what last week was like because it's just been crazy, but I'm going to focus on yesterday and today. And so yesterday, we had a letter in our doors that said it was imperative that you notify the office if you didn't have hot water, and that's basically all it said. And so I, you know, news travels fast, there were people that had already left for work, people that were just out doing things, and I started getting messages from my neighbors, what's going on, what do I need to do? And I wasn't quite sure what that meant. Did it, you know, it listed the word imperative twice, so we thought maybe that meant this was going to be the last time anyone could let the office know. So we were a little concerned about that. But we were invited to a meeting with the mayor, and four of us went to meet with her, and she included the fire chief, Enterline, and Anne Montgomery from City Codes, and then the city solicitor. I believe his last name is Grover, correct? Yeah, okay. And it was so nice walking in that meeting because she had already been making plans to bring in a hot shower vehicle. And I'm going to probably tear up again, because it was just so awesome that, you know, she heard about this and wasn't going to wait for the meeting on Monday, and just was already in the works in planning this for our residents. And that just really made everyone, the other three did not have hot water, and it just made them really feel like they were heard for the first time. They also talked about trying to find the owners of the buildings. They still can't do that. The address is in Montsi, New York, and it's, I actually Google-earths it, and it's a Hasidic Jew community of 30,000 people. And so it shows a picture of the building that this address is in, and it just looks like a meeting center. So that's very odd, but no one can find the actual name of the owner. But Mayor Williams also told Codes to start finding the building, or the management, I guess they would send it to management, every day until we had hot water, and she was very adamant about that. So today was just a beehive of activity in our building. We had Haller Enterprises was there, Chief Enterline was there again, City Codes was there, and there was another gentleman there that I'm not sure who that was. But they were just going door to door, and the paper that I had given you last time that was here that listed the apartment numbers, City Codes did not have these apartment numbers, and these people did not have hot water. So we did not know where they got their numbers from, but that was concerning, you know, to us as well. And then State Representative Nate Davidson's office called me this morning, and they wanted to know what could be done. And the only thing I knew at the time is when they were bringing the shower vehicle in, they needed CSAs, they were called, and I'm assuming that is similar to a CNA, an aid to help those that are in wheelchairs and walkers?
No. No, it's a community service aide. I'll let our public safety chairman share their role.
Yeah, they're community service aides, that's what they are, and they're pretty much to non-emergency events, educating the community on ordinances, that's some of the work that they do, de-escalating situations, you know, that's part of their job.
Okay, well, they were supposed to be the ones that were going to help those in wheelchairs and walkers get into the vehicle and shower and carry their toiletries, but the county commissioners denied that, they would not pay for that. So that didn't happen. We were trying to convince the office staff to allow the ambulatory residents to use a vacant apartment that had hot water. And so they did finally agree to that, but nothing was set up, to my knowledge, no one has been notified, no tenant has been notified. And then we received late this afternoon the letter that you see before you, and it is not correct. I love the wording. It says, "All units are able to receive hot water." It does not say all units have hot water, so, you know, this is what we deal with on a regular basis. And Julia is going to share her situation. There are still people that do not have hot water. They do have to order a valve for each faucet or in each apartment. That's another thing that has to be done. So, you know, they're working on it, they're not telling me too much anymore, and I'm not a favorite person for the office staff at the moment, so we try to pick up bits and pieces as we can. But I thank you, and I thank everyone that's been involved. It's great to have support, and really, they are feeling like that they matter and that somebody is listening and working on it, but we're not done. So this letter is really kind of silly.
Mr. Grover? I'm kind of confused.
Oh, I'm sorry, sir.
Yeah, yeah, he's sitting here. So I'm kind of confused because she said the county commissioners wouldn't pay for the CSAs. Who's paying for the water truck?
I am not really sure what that reference is to with the county commissioners.
I am not really sure what that reference is to with the county commissioners. The fire chief, uh, was arranging for a sh- a portable shower, which is closed. Um, with the, um, when the mayor makes an emergency declaration for a site emergency, it was supposed to open up the opportunity for PMA to assist. And then we would enter into an emergency contract with, with a company called, I sent, Sun, Sun Belt Rentals, the same ones who provided the equipment at the Broad Street Market. That was the last I had on that conversation late Friday afternoon. Um, I do think there's still, as some confusion, um, we, we had gotten a message late in the day from Codes, that the places that they had tested earlier, that they tested today, that they did have their hot water at the temperature allowed, but I guess we're still not through the whole building. So I don't know if it's unit by unit they're having to go in there, uh, but that was the message that Ms. Montgomery sent late today, that they were down there. And for the ones they tested before, they're now back up to where they're supposed to be. I don't know the numbers, but the tenants are telling us they're still not all there. So, um, it, it's, it's a work in progress. But the fire chief is, as the, as the person who handles emergency management, was making the arrangements for that.
Yeah, I was a little confused.
Yeah, and, and I'm not.
We were too, because he's a fire chief, we didn't, but he's been very involved.
Right, well, and so he does communicate with the county, so I don't know whether they were just in the discussion, I don't know where they came into it, um, because this has been.
Yeah, because it doesn't seem like we needed funding to help, CSAs help.
It would have been, it would have been funding for what is a very expensive piece of equipment, that shower.
Okay.
Very expensive.
Oh, so, so that's what I'm asking, was?
But I'm guessing, because I, I, we, we were, we were trying to get down to what was paying for that on Friday, um, and, uh, I haven't talked to the chief today.
Okay. Yeah, I would like to find that information out myself.
We will get you the information.
Thank you.
And the water temperature that City Codes approves is eighty-five degrees to a hundred and ten. Now, I don't know, eighty-five degrees doesn't sit well with me, I mean, our body temperatures are ninety-eight point six, I don't see that as being hot. Um, and in the, in the beginning when this all started, I was told eighty-five degrees is for your kitchen sink, and a hundred and ten is for your shower. Um, but they're, they're going by eighty-five degrees, if they get it to eighty-five degrees, they're happy with that. So that's what, that's what we're settled with. Go home and check your furnaces, I bet yours all set at a hundred and twenty.
And, uh, thank you.
Seriously, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Thank you for, uh, everything you're doing. And, uh, another, um, point of, uh, reference to know is that, um, the, um, state, state rep, Dave, Nate Davidson's office has been in touch with the property management, uh, company, so, um, that is also, you know, in line with the direct communication with the property manager, so they know what's going on.
Yeah, and I don't know if they brought anyone, what, what this representative's office told me was that, um, after talking to David Lind, he was sending his guy. And I, I don't know if that's the George Cruz from New, New Jersey, that is sort of like a regional maintenance guy for, for Lind Management. Um, he was sending him to our building, and then they were going to get whatever, um, workers, uh, needed to, to be. And when I told the fire chief that, he said they were probably just blowing smoke, so they would get off the phone. And, yeah, I don't think anybody from Lind Management came to our building today. We're still, we're still going, we're not stopping, we're not stopping.
Thank you, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to offer public comment?
Good evening, me, my name is Julia Del Toro, and I'm also a resident at, um, Harmony Towers, I've been living with them, it's going to be six years this coming May. And the issue with the hot water started for me and my unit about maybe six or seven months ago. And of course, at that time, it was spring, summer, and I was okay with lukewarm water. But, um, I didn't put much to it, because it wasn't a big issue at the time, but now that it, we're in the middle of winter, and I have no hot water, it's lukewarm, and it comes and it goes, so I have to jump in, get that little lukewarm water going, then jump back out, and I don't think it's fair to anybody, because we have a lot of residents that are seniors, like more than seventy percent of the people that live there, uh, are senior citizens. It was Presbyterian apartment before it became Harmony Towers. Uh, these people are in wheelchairs, on walkers, and, you know, it's not everybody in the building that's being affected by it, but it's enough people for them to take actions and do something about it. And I've addressed it with the office numerous times, other residents, and nothing has been done. Thanks to resident, uh, uh, Deb, who hasn't even been with us over a year, she took it upon herself to reach out to you guys, to the city violation company, and one thing after another has really helped. We had one of our first meetings in the building, uh, last week, I think, and, uh, Crystal Davis, thank you, she came and participated with us, and just every little bit helps. And the ball is rolling, and things are changing. For the first time, I think it's been about three days, I've had hot, hot water, and I'm able to take a shower. And now it's still coming and going, but at least I can take a shower. And I was one of the residents that had to actually get a membership at a gym to go take a shower, because, I mean, I can't go without not taking a shower. My relatives all live out of state, they're from New York, that's where I'm from, and I wouldn't want to pester anybody, oh, can I come over to your place to take a shower? You know, so, um, it's been an ongoing battle with the office, and we have other issues with them too, but the hot water was the main issue, and being winter. So I really want to say thank you to you guys for the support that you've given us, and getting the ball rolling of who we needed to talk. Yesterday was a big accomplishment, because we had a meeting with Mayor Williams at two o'clock, and she called everybody into the office, this gentleman, I can't remember, his last name was in there, um, the chief, fire chief was there, um, Anne Montgomery, who, uh, the city code, they were all in the room, and she was like, well, do this, do this, do this, and that was a big help too, because now we have these trucks in the building that are showing up and doing what they're supposed to do. Somebody was saying that, because the building is so old, it was built in nineteen sixty-seven, that the part that they needed to replace had to be made. I don't know anything about plumbing. So that was taking a while, but, I mean, six months, seven months that I waited, I think it's a little ridiculous. It really wasn't really, uh, they really weren't focusing on that, they really didn't care, until now that, you know, other people have gotten involved. So I just want to say thank you to you guys, we really appreciate your help in this situation. I took a nice hot shower today, and I feel good. Thank you again.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else that would like to offer public comment?
Good evening, Council, I'm Carlos Johnson, I live in Colonial Park. I actually am a little taller than the previous speaker, so bear with me. Did I get it?
I think it's the opposite.
Oh, okay. All right, that'll work. Good evening again, uh, my name is Carlos Johnson, as I said before, um, I'm, I live in Colonial Park. Uh, I started a, a nonprofit organization, it's called Right Way to Do It. Uh, Right Way to Do It, our main demographic is, uh, basically the, uh, people who Councilman, uh, Rodriguez was speaking of earlier, uh, a lot of unhoused and unspoken for people in this community, uh, that really don't have the wherewithal to actually get their needs met. So, uh, Right Way to Do It is actually a, a tool that I've actually formed to go between the resources and the people who need them. Uh, currently, we're working on a project on, uh, the Allison Hill section of, of the Hill, uh, district out here in Harrisburg. We have two properties that we're, you currently are in the process of looking to renovate, but we're in, looking for funding, and we're looking for a little bit of support. I was, my demographic was for a little younger, uh, population, because I know that there's a lot of teenagers out there that's unhoused. However, due to my criminal background, uh, I spoke to that, to, to, about that here, uh, prior, I, I wasn't really approved to do that, you know, uh, so what I did was I started dealing with the adults. And with that said, I don't have any problems with, um, doing the work that I would love to do for the whole community, uh, not whole, the whole city, actually. But what we're trying to do here today is actually, um, just putting the word out to you guys again, uh, that we're here, I'm trying to do some good work for people who can't really come out and speak. Uh, what we do is, um, I actually put it on a flyer, I have my flyers here, so I can pass them out to you, I don't want to take too much of you guys' time, can I pass mine? Like I said, um, I don't want to take too much time, so as he passes those out, we, we address a lot of the social determinants of health, uh, for a lot of, uh, people in the community. My past made me a lot, uh, less confident to step out and do what I felt in my heart to do, I'm passionate about. But, you know, after speaking with, uh, either Councilman Jones here, man, and, um, you know, hearing his testimony and his, his past, he influenced me, uh, to just go out there, man, and, 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 you know, put myself out there, because I believe that we can all do something. And, and this critical time, man, we all need to do something. And what I do is I try to educate a lot of people in those communities, uh, that you don't have to, uh, succumb to your cir- your circumstances or environment. Uh, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the middle section that would like to offer public comment?
Hello, Ryan Woodley, uh, resident at two-five-three Riley Street in Midtown. So I'm in and out of town, but in, uh, I would say late summer, I started to notice trash in the streets, on Riley Street, Green Street, Third Street, leaf sticks, trash, not being cleaned, so, and I would not see the sweepers coming through, so I'm, I'm here to find out, are they, did they make a change to the frequency on streets being cleaned in Harrisburg? Okay. Well, something's going on, and I'm going to go call them, or I'll go to their office, but it's, I can tell you right now, it's not being done. If it's being done, it's, it's, it's not being done effectively, so, um, that was one issue. Number, uh, the second one is trash in those new col- uh, I call them collection areas, trash areas, they're, city spent millions, or somebody spent millions, to put in those garden areas with flowers, shrubs, you've got weeds growing in there, you've got trash in there. So I believe Capital Water Region is supposed to be cleaning those, or it was handed over to the city, but why do we spend millions doing something like that, which makes sense if you're actually going to keep it looking good? So those are two comments I want to put to everybody, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the middle section that would like to offer public comment?
Good evening, Council, President. Uh, my name is Lewis, from Uptown. I'm here to show what time infrastructure is. Now, I'm going to talk with Mr. Farr about, they want to spend two billion dollars, but they can't keep a clock on. We have our clock in, at the, at our square, that has been wrong for such a long time, and I refuse to have that clock be wrong any longer. That's a time infrastructure breach, when you're a municipality, and you have a clock right there in your square, and it's wrong, it's in the bad, it's a principality when you're, when people rely on that clock. Everybody doesn't have a cellphone. There are kids out there who need to make it to class, there's people who need to make it to court, there's people, people need to be on time. And when you're a city, when you're a municipality, and you have a responsibility to have a clock this accurate, that's right, and when it's wrong, you send a message that nobody cares the priority of time, it don't matter. It's up to us, it's up to a leader, to make sure that the clock at our square is accurate and it's right. We need to have a campaign based on timeliness. If you don't think it's, it's impo- if you don't think timeliness is important, it's the number one priority. Not all the millions and millions of dollars that they're throwing out, can you, because that's catch responsibility. I'm going to talk to Farr tomorrow, it's going to be right, and it's going to be right for the rest of, you know, that's their responsibility. But if I'm the only person that's getting up here and standing up and saying, somebody needs to make sure this clock is right, because everybody's looking at it, then there's really a priority that we all need to look at. Everybody has to be on one time, not my time, not Lewis's, not Sharky's time, not Billy's time, not Ricky's time, everybody has to be on one time. We have to be a synchronized people, and it starts with our city square. It radiates from our center. And if we're off right there, we're off all over. It's not about a million dollars, it's about that little stuff. That when the kid asks me, what time is it, Sharky, and I look at the clock and it's wrong, that's not good, because I'm relying on it. I don't have a cellphone, so I look at that clock, and it's supposed to be right, I'm supposed to live uptown, if I'm, my clock is wrong, I'm supposed to be able to walk downtown, look at that clock, synchronize everything, and walk back with the right time. It's called time infrastructure, and that's our time piece, and we have to make sure it's serious, and we take it serious. I'm not only, every, everybody has to be synchronized, that's how Lancaster synchronized, they got, their clock is on, Middletown, their clock is wide open, lit and on time. Linglestown, their clock is, we're the capital city of Pennsylvania, we go down to the square and it's wrong for three years? Come on, we got to do better, I'm talking to Farr tomorrow, and we're going to make an agreement that if that's your responsibility, that's our responsibility. If you can't take care of that clock, we can take care of it for ourselves. And I'm, I'm done, but that's my pet peeve, being on time, and, and making sure we have a clock that everybody can rely on.
Thank you. Is there anyone to my left that would like to offer public comment? Seeing and hearing no one, we will move forward, uh, with our meeting agenda. Next, we have the approval of minutes for the legislative session of February eleventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Council members, are there any revisions to those minutes? Okay, seeing and hearing none, the minutes stand approved. Next, we have reports of committees. I will deliver the first report on behalf of the Administration Committee on the work session of February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five. On Tuesday, February eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, the Administration Committee met to discuss three resolutions. The first, Resolution Seven of two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution appointing Robert C. Kennick the Second, Director of Financial Management for the City of Harrisburg, to serve as the Dolphin County Tax Collection Committee delegate for the City of Harrisburg. Mr. Robert C. Kennick the Second, Director of Financial Management, was present on behalf of the Administration. Per the resolution, section five oh five B of Act Thirty-two, requires the governing body of school districts, townships, boroughs, and cities to appoint a voting delegate to represent the entity on the Dolphin County Tax Collection Committee. Mr. Kennick, if appointed, would replace the former Director of Financial Management, Mrs. Marita Kelly. Council members asked the following questions. What impact do you believe you we- you will be able to make as a member of the Dolphin County Tax Collection Committee, and do you have any conflicts of interest? Mr. Kennick believes he will add value to the committee by being a positive voice for the City of Harrisburg. He has no known conflicts of interest. Next, Resolution Eight of two thousand and twenty-five, a resolution confirming the appointment of Mr. Robert C. Kennick the Second to serve as Director of Financial Management for the City of Harrisburg. Mr. Kennick was present on behalf of the Administration, he introduced himself, uh, sharing that his last five professional roles were as a controller. Mr. Kennick holds a Bachelor of Science degree in accounting from the University of Maryland, and he is a certified public accountant. Council members asked the following questions. What brought you to the City of Harrisburg? What are your goals in your new role? How did you hear about the job? Do you have any government experience? Do you have supervisory experience? Do you live in the City of Harrisburg? How will you ensure the ICA's involvement? What is the largest budget you've ever handled, and have you had any trouble, uh, learning the MUNIS system? Mr. Kennick recently worked for a privately owned company that was transitioning ownership. He deliberately was interested in roles in either the nonprofit sector or government. His goals include building the team and building relationships, audit completions, getting , uh, the, the audits back on, uh, a clear schedule, ICA reporting, and meeting other department heads. He learned of the job from Indeed, and he actually applied in September of two thousand and twenty-four. This is the first role in- This is the first role in government that he's ever had. The largest number of employees he has supervised is 10 people. Mr. Kennick resides in York and has no plans to move. Mr. Kennick would ensure the ICA's involvement by expediting information, and he noted that he's big on cross-training. The largest budget he's ever handled is approximately $70 million. Mr. Kennick has no known conflicts of interest, and he has limited exposure to the munis system. Our final resolution was Resolution 9 of 2025, a resolution confirming the appointment of Mr. Samuel F. Skolkowski to serve as Business Administrator for the City of Harrisburg. Mr. Skolkowski was present on behalf of the Administration. He introduced himself. He has been employed by the City of Harrisburg since October of 2024. He holds a Bachelor of Science degree from the Indiana University of Pennsylvania. He shared that he has over 20 years of experience. He has connections to the City of Harrisburg from the previous Finance Director, Mrs. Marita Kelly. Council members asked the following questions. Questions around his employment history. Were there other candidates considered for the role of Business Administrator? What is one significant change he's made since he arrived in October? How did he hear about the job? What is the biggest difference between previous roles in the City of Harrisburg? And what goals has he set in his new role? He noted that Mrs. Kelly provided a recommendation. City Solicitor Neil Grover shared that other candidates were interviewed. One significant change he's made is thoroughly reviewing the procurement process and the budget process. In reference to the budget process, he mentioned ARPA staff meetings to find out, I guess, where the administration is on funding and police pension. Mr. Skolkowski heard about the job through either the Pennsylvania Municipal League or PSBA. He, he does reside in the City of Harrisburg. The biggest difference between previous roles held and the role of Business Administrator for the City of Harrisburg are, it's the Chief Administrative Officer. He previously wore four to five different hats. In his current role, he can specialize more. He has set the following goals. ARPA, police pensions, pilot agreements, procurement policy, Governor Square, munis system, Broad Street Market, F and B Field, and affordable housing. He has no known conflicts of interest. I would recommend support of Resolution 7 of 2025, appointing Mr. Robert Kennick II to serve as a member of the Dolphin County Tax Collection Committee to ensure the City of Harrisburg has representation. I would suggest voting as you please for both Resolution 8 of 2025 and Resolution 9 of 2025. This concludes the work and the report of the Administration Committee. The next committee report you will hear will be delivered by our Public Safety Committee Chair, Councilman Jones, on the work session of February 18th, 2025.
Thank you, President Bowers. On February 18th, 2025, the Public Safety Committee held a work session where we discussed Resolution 6 of 2025. And Resolution 20, I mean, Resolution 6 of 2025 was a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with WCA Public Safety Assessments for the purpose of providing psychological testing and assessments for the city's Borough of Police. Present to discuss Resolution 6 was Commissioner Carter and Deputy Chief Young, where we discussed the longstanding contract with WCA, where these evaluations are pre-hire and incident-based evaluations. Some of the questions council asked was, how does the company ensure consistency and reliability? That was a better question for the WCA. However, they do have a test that is given that better evaluates without bias. There also was asked, is there support for officers that may have incidents? Yes, there are, there is support for officers that have incidents that may have been involved in incidents. So question, another question asked about the support of ICE. The commissioner answered that they cannot interfere with ICE, and as far as they know, officers are not supporting ICE. And it's a pretty short report. So that ends my report for public safety, and I do recommend that my colleagues support Bill 6 of 2025.
Thank you. The final committee report you will hear this evening will be delivered by our Public Works Committee Chair, Councilman Rodriguez, on the work session of February 18th, 2025.
Thank you, Madam President. On Tuesday, February 18th, the Public Works Committee met to discuss Resolution 10 of 2025, Hotspot Saturdays. Hotspot Saturdays is a resolution of the City Council of the City of Harrisburg, reestablishing Hotspot Saturdays, a community beautification and public safety initiative designed to encourage city residents to participate in six community cleanup events throughout the summer of 2025. As committee chair, I gave a brief description of this year's initiative and aired a brief highlight video from past cleanups. Council was very positive and supportive, and I look forward to working with our residents and volunteer base during the season. The dates and areas for the 2025 season are April 19th, Ethel Alley, May 10th, Midtown, June 14th, Uptown, July 26th, North Harrisburg, August 23rd, South Allison Hill, and September 3rd, on the south side of Harrisburg. For a report in accuracy, I took the liberty of documenting how we received the hard numbers each year and put it in a report for my colleagues on council. If any resident would like to get this information, please contact Mr. Parker or Mr. Truesdale, our Deputy City Clerk, to retain a copy of this report. Please indulge me briefly as I cover the program totals. Year one of '22, we covered 12.41 tons. Year two will be 59.5, and 2024 will be 180 tons, for a total of 151.91 tons. We have got the direct emails from Public Works, which I shared with council, and the only actual email we didn't receive was from the year '23. During the budget hearing on Tuesday, December 12th of '23, Mr. Austin Griffin reported, we removed the 59 tons of waste, 59.5, excuse me, tons of waste through the '23 season. I did ask that those numbers be sent to Council President then, when then-chair and of the committee, Rob Lawson, had it. I have not been emailed the metrics, but it was stated on the record for council. All cleanups will take place this season from 10 to 12. And for specific maps, meetups, and more information, please email rrodriguez@harrisburgpa.gov. I encourage my colleagues to support Resolution 10 of 2025. And that concludes the Public Works Report from the work session from February 18th of '25. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, both Councilman Jones and Councilman Rodriguez. We have three ordinances for first reading. The first is Bill 1 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Bill 1, 2025, in ordinance amending Chapter 2-515, Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee of Title II Administrative Code to grant City Council exclusive appointment authority over the Citizens Law Enforcement Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Bill 1 of 2025 will move to the Administration Committee. Next, we have Bill 2 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Bill 2, 2025, in ordinance forgiving and discharging 2024 city real estate taxes, including interest, penalties, and costs, and striking off tax liens for certain historically tax exempt properties.
Thank you. Bill 2 of 2025 will also move to the Administration Committee. Bill 3 of 2025, Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Bill 3, 2025, in ordinance amending the City of Harrisburg's official zoning map to change the parcel zoning designation of 640 Alwrix Street from the industrial zone to the residential medium-density zone pursuant to Chapter 7-303 of the codified ordinances of the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Bill 3 of 2025 will move to the Community and Economic Development Committee. We do not have any ordinances for amendment or ordinances for final passage. We will move forward with resolutions. The first resolution for consideration this evening is Resolution 6 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 6, 2025, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with WCA Public Safety Assessments for the purpose of providing psychological testing and assessment for the city's Bureau of Police.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution 6 of 2025? Seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution, Resolution 6, 2025, passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 7 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 7, 2025, a resolution appointing Robert C. Kennick II, Director of Financial Management for the City of Harrisburg, to serve as the Dolphin County Tax Collection Committee Delegate for the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution 7 of 2025? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution 7, 2025, passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 8 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 8, 2025, a resolution confirming the appointment of Mr. Robert C. Kennick II to serve as Director of Financial Management for the City of Harrisburg.
Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution 8 of 2025? I just have one comment. I will be voting no on this resolution. Although Mr. Kennick does have extensive financial experience and background, I am concerned that he, this is his first role in government. So that is a little concerning for me. So I will be voting no on this resolution. Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
No.
Resolution 8, 2025, passes by a vote of six to one.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 9 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 9, 2025, a resolution confirming the appointment of Mr. Samuel F. Skolkowski to serve as Business Administrator for the City of Harrisburg.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution 9 of 2025?
I have a comment, please.
Yes.
Thank you. I had one concern, well, a few concerns about Mr. Skolkowski in this position. One of my concerns were that if I had to base the performance of this yes or no vote, I was concerned of two particular meetings where Mr. Skolkowski was not prepared to give us answers, although he was stepping in to the role of that director. Resolution 1 of 2025, to be exact, was one of the meetings where we couldn't get answers on the ESG funds that we so needed to be able to vote on that resolution. I also had concerns that there was a reputation of being hostile against council members. And I do remember in particular night, there was an incident between Mr. Skolkowski and Councilman Rodriguez. These two things concerned me, being able to say yes for this resolution to appoint Mr. Skolkowski as our Business Administrator. So tonight, I will be voting no. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution 9 of 2025? I have one comment again. I will be voting no on Resolution 9 of 2025. What concerns me about Mr. Skolkowski is his storied employment history. Now, I understand he noted it's the nature of the role. Sure, there's a change in an administration. So I would assume perhaps like two years, maybe the full four, would be sufficient in a role. However, on some of the roles within his, noted on his resume, he was only in a role five or six months or less in some instances. So that's a little concerning for me. So I will be voting no on Resolution 9 of 2025. If there are no further questions or comments, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
No.
Mr. Rodriguez?
No.
Ms. Bowers?
No.
Resolution 9, 2025, fails by a vote of three to four.
Thank you. Next, we have Resolution 10 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 10, 2025, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Harrisburg, reestablishing Hotspot Saturdays, a community beautification and public safety initiative designed to encourage city residents to participate in six community cleanup events throughout the summer of 2025.
Thank you. Council members, are there any questions, comments, or concerns related to Resolution 10 of 2025? Okay, seeing and hearing none, Mr. Truesdale, could you please call the vote?
Ms. Daniels?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Absolutely, yes.
Ms. Green?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yay.
Ms. Rawls?
Yes.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yes.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Resolution 10, 2025, passes by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Resolution 11 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 11, 2025, a resolution approving the second proposed 2025 budget reallocation, appropriation, and allocation of certain funds.
Thank you. Resolution 11 of 2025 will move to the Budget and Finance Committee. Resolution 12 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 12, 2025, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a professional services agreement with Conrad Siegel Incorporated to provide actuarial services to assist the city in negotiations of certain collective bargaining agreements.
Thank you. Resolution 12 of 2025 will move to the Administration Committee. Resolution 13 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 13, 2025, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a landowner grantee agreement with the Dolphin County Conservation District in furtherance of the 2024 Countywide Action Plan Riparian Buffer Project.
Thank you. Resolution 13 of 2025 will move to the Administration Committee. Our final resolution this evening is Resolution 14 of 2025. Mr. Truesdale, could you please read it into the record?
Resolution 14, 2025, a resolution authorizing the City of Harrisburg to negotiate and enter into a memorandum of understanding with the Susquehanna Township School District. School District for the purpose of the continued use of a salt dome storage facility and the removal of solar panels.
Thank you. Resolution Fourteen of two thousand and twenty-five will move to the Administration Committee. Is there any old business for discussion, council members? Okay, seeing and hearing none, any new business? Okay, I do have a few notes for new business, but I will be quick. Um, as I mentioned earlier, the presentation shared by Rapid Transit, uh, will be available for public review on the city's website under e-codes tomorrow, Wednesday, February twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-five. Please note, a policy work session, uh, will be held tomorrow, Wednesday, February twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-five, at five thirty PM to discuss workforce development. And a final, uh, schedule change. Um, there is currently a work session meeting scheduled for Tuesday, March eighteenth. Uh, we will be canceling that meeting. A Harrisburg City Council instead will host a work session on March twenty-fifth, um, followed, immediately followed by a legislative session. The time is seven thirty-nine PM. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. We stand adjourned.